Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight, we're having committee meetings. We'll begin with Committee of the Whole and then follow with four additional specific committees. Our Committee of the Whole tonight is for the purpose of getting a pool update. You may recall that we passed a levy back in November 2014 with it becoming effective January 1, 2016 for purposes of funding a pool and then also improvements to our park system. What's followed has been a series of public meetings as well as requests for qualifications and then, I believe, a request for proposal to be working to begin work with a specific company for design and engineering. And we thought it would be beneficial, since the last public meeting was July 12th and since we now are moving forward with legislation to approve the bond that will allow us to borrow the money for construction of the pool, to have an update tonight with comments from council members and also administration. We do have some members of the audience who may wish to speak and we do have a piece of communication from a citizen that I'll share at some point during our committee tonight. So I'd like to begin perhaps with, I know that Councilmember Butler and Councilmember Katsis have been attending the Recreation Advisory Committee meetings and so maybe begin with a little bit of comments if you'd like to, to take that option to give us an update. And then also, we have the mayor here who has attended many of those meetings as well as our Deputy Service Safety Director Ron Lucas. So Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nysli. I'll just acknowledge that briefly, Member Katsis and I were present at the last Recreation Advisory Board meeting in which Director Rich Campatelli offered, as well as our City Service Safety Director Paula Haran-Mosley, offered some images with some ideas and drawings and renderings of some potential pool plans. And I forwarded those to the rest of council. So although we're experiencing some technical difficulties this evening with our computers here, we can look at them at our leisure at another time as well. I think it was informative, the meeting, and there's still a general, there isn't a confirmed consensus yet at the moment, we're still gathering information. Thank you.
Okay. And Councilmember Katsis?
Yes. Basically, what Councilmember Butler said, I did see the plans, there are three options. They're all in a different spot than where the existing pool is. I don't, do we have the ability to see those tonight? Can we get those up on the screen?
I am pulling them up on my phone even though we have no computer.
But what about for the members that are out there?
We don't have that available on the screen for tonight, so.
So, you know, if I can just move straight into my thoughts and I can just say them once and kind of get them out there. I know that Councilmember Butler has mentioned in the past that we need to think about OU and that in the next five years, they might be doing some sort of, maybe a different pool and it might be something that will be with the city, you know, some sort of collaboration. But my daughter, who's in Bobcat Swim Club, you know, recently, they decided to change the programming and it was decided within some closed doors at the university that it was not in their mission to provide community programming. So I don't think, to myself, I don't believe that OU should be considered as part of this conversation. And really, that's, you know, as I've been working through this, it's who's part of this conversation and who isn't part of this conversation at this point. The second one is going to that farmer's, I'm sorry, going to that meeting on 7/12 and there was a good group of people there from the Athens Farmers Market who I felt really, really pushed the location of the pool. Maybe not for the best interest of the pool, but for the best, a better interest for the market. And I question whether or not the levy was put forth to support that. So I wonder what the cost comparison is between, you know, the old spot versus the new spot. I'm looking at both of them. The new spot will require more earthwork. I believe the old spot is also going to require some earthwork too because I assume that the floodplain levels must have been lower in 1971 than what they are now because it doesn't look like it's on the same level as the community center, which is what the new site will have to be brought up to. So I'm curious about that. And then finally, since the bond ordinance was read last week for the first time, when the group comes forward on the 26th, and the company's name escapes me at the moment.
MSA.
MSA, thank you. We will have one week before the third reading of the bond ordinance. And so I guess my final, I guess my only question is, what's the rush? So, thank you.
And I think, council members, we will come back to some other information, but Mayor Patterson, do you have some information about those drawings and an update that's helpful at this point before we begin all the other comments and questions?
Well, I think the main update, and it's been mentioned several times, that MSA Sport is going to be coming with a full presentation before council on the 26th, as Member Katsis was just mentioning a minute ago. The images that you do have, there is option A, B, and C, I believe, that you're looking at. And I know that when conversations with MSA Sport, in terms of the layout or A layout of the pools, that would include a leisure pool, an eight-lane, 25-meter pool with a dive well on the side, as well as a toddler pool, or as we refer to it in the city, the baby pool, and also a splash pad, and then a runout slide. So there are several features involved in what MSA Sport, and all three of the concepts that council that you've seen, they're just in different configurations. It was option C that we felt was probably the best, the most conducive to wherever the pool lands. We've instructed MSA Sport to look at the original pool location, for putting that. I was just looking at the 20-year flood map, as well as some actual flood images from 2005. And it was interesting in that the community center proper, as well as the, our current swimming pool are roughly at the same elevations, which has certainly caused us to circle back around with MSA Sport and say, what would the, give us your cost estimate for building on the existing site of the former, well, the current swimming pool. The interesting thing to share with all the council as well as the public is that there's some other things to consider, which is fine, I mean, that's what we're doing, is considering all options, is with looking at a site that was closer to where the solar panels, which is the images that you all have right now, would mean that construction could go along at that site. There would have to be some significant grading with elevation issues off the backside of that side of, we're talking southeast corner of the community center for infill and grading to go on down there. The upside of that site in particular is that we would have one more year of our existing swimming pool and being able to use it while the other pool is still under construction because at this timeframe, no matter how far we push them and tried to get them to build out a swimming pool of whatever type, we're not going to make, you know, an opening of next summer. If we go with the original site, we're obviously going to have to demo the site and then with the demo of the site, there is no pool in Athens and then there would be construction going on in that site, likely not to be completed until sometime late summer, more realistically, fall of 2017, if we demoed and rebuilt on the current site. Conversations again with Paul Logue, he did a lot of research on, at the level of the ORC, what guidance is there out there when it comes to putting a tank of a swimming pool anywhere near a flood, the floodway, actually, it's floodplain, not floodway. And there isn't a whole lot of guidance when it comes to a swimming pool. MSA Sport explored a couple of different things of putting some anchor pins, putting pins down, you know, there's some things that can be done. Would we have to go the full four foot of soil elevation to bring the pool site up to what the community center sits at in that southeast corner? Possibly not, but we know it's an area where it, water will rise to that point if you're looking at the topo maps and the elevations back there. So that's the long of the short update that I can give you. MSA will be coming back with an estimated cost now, cost for having the same features that you've looked at, that you've got before you, but having that in the current pool's site. Those plans also show that you're looking at, it does have a location for a future natatorium attached to the site of the community center, roughly in the location near where the basketball courts are with the current communities are, so attached to that side of the building. But at this point, you know, when you're looking at the levy dollars that there are, the outdoor pool is where we're landing, especially if Ohio University is the first I've heard this, although I think we've all heard grumblings here and there as to what is coming through with their comprehensive plan in terms of what gets changed around. But at the end of the day, if it's a comp pool and a therapy pool or whatever configuration they go down, it's unknown at this point in time, it's still an indoor aquatic center in the city of Athens.
Councilmember Pappy, I know that you had a question you wanted to ask.
I, a couple of things, I can update, Member Katsis and those of you that weren't in our luncheon with President McDavis, I did broach this subject and it was the Director of Student Affairs who directly supervises the Director of Recreation. And he said that they were working the issue out. I felt it was important, since he's only new to Athens, three months, that he have a history of the indoor swimming facilities in southeastern Ohio, which there are none but there, and that he kind of understands that strong connection in what the city has been working through in terms of our pool levy and those kinds of things. And just in terms of the healthy indoor pool group that exists here in this community, that if it really was true that there was a mission statement or there was a mission comment made, which I saw in an email as well, that purposes for recreation for the city of Athens, that wasn't in their mission statement. That's what was in the email. So hopefully, what we heard at that luncheon is accurate and they will move forward with continuing to serve, I hope, the indoor swimming population of this community, which as we know, from all our public meetings and everything that we've done in the last several years through this process, is a very strong and vocal group who wants that recreation opportunity. So, question on the three A, B, and C here that we're looking at. So this was a kind of a computation of all the ideas that were generated from the July 12th public hearing. Okay? Is that correct?
It is. I wasn't at that July 12th meeting, but yes, as I understand it, that's what MSA Sport, they did a rapid-fire round with everyone. They also.
They did, I was there.
They also reached out to the kids camp at the community center and engaged with 35 pool users, youth, who had used the pool and asked them what kinds of features they would like to see, but as well as reaching out to a number of people who attended the 6:30 meeting, or 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
July.
On July 12th.
And I would only say, I don't think we've had any public comment here in council about this, but I would just say, there was a bit of disappointment, a lot of disappointment in that room because the consultant did and verified with me after the meeting, he was there to discuss an outdoor pool. So that was rather confusing for the folks in that room that night, many folks in that room, because they thought they were going to hear about two options, you know, an option indoor and option outdoor. So it was a disappointing evening for many.
Other council members who would like to make comment or have questions? Yes, Councilmember McGee.
Thank you, President Nysli. I have just one question, does that mean then that the indoor notarium aspect of this pool is off the table now? I know you've said that maybe sometime in the future, we would do a notarium that would be connected to the city center, but I mean, if you're coming to council and we've gone through months of hearing different possibilities, I mean, is that just, the decision is made, that's off the table for a notarium? And if so, then who made the decision? That's what I'd like to know.
Well, through all the meetings, I mean, you know, Member McGee, as you know, these meetings have been going on since 2014 of going through and trying to figure out what we can, what we can afford. You know, the levy isn't just for a swimming pool and we've had this conversation time and time again, it's not. It's for all the city parks, it's for all of arts parks and recreations, there's a lot of things in play. And when you're looking at $7.3 million to go towards a swimming facility, that has to include the interest rate to pay down that bond, it has to include the design engineering, we're looking at, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of 5.5, 5.6, these are guesstimates on my part, but somewhere in that neighborhood, you know, $5.7 million to construct a pool. Well, and we also have been down the avenue of what could we get? How far can we spread this out thin and come up with something to have both an indoor natatorium and an outdoor swimming facility? And you're going to end up at the end of the day with a subpar swimming facility if you try to do that. You're going to get a little kiddie pool and you're going to get an indoor facility that is really not much to write home about. And so the outdoor pool is where we're landing at this point in time, moving forward an outdoor pool. And we have scoped into this, you know, the possible location for an indoor natatorium in the future, you know, in the future, would there be another levy that's gone after to try and fund an addatorium? But at this point in time, we're landing on an outdoor pool.
Other comments from council members?
President Nysli?
Yes.
Thank you. I can just briefly add that the previous consultants that we worked with, Brent, Sider, and Carroll, acknowledged that indoor pools don't generate the same amount of revenue as outdoor pools. So not that that should be 100 percent, we should take it with a grain of salt, but that's the consultants that are the professionals that have been working in the field for a number of years and that's the information that they've gathered through their experiences. And I don't, I didn't feel that I was being misled when I was being informed of that information. Likewise, indoor pools don't have the attendance rates typically that outdoor pools, even though it seems counterintuitive because the outdoor season is so small, but families spend all day at outdoor pools and that an indoor pool doesn't seem to have that same type of draw, unless you include all the bells and whistles and pool slides and gadgetry and whatnot. But generally speaking, a traditional sort of simple indoor notatorium isn't bringing in families to spend all day there. That's the way I interpreted their information. Thank you.
Okay. I will share with you a piece of correspondence we have received from Todd Swerengen, who has been with us through much of the pool discussion, and his comment said that in October, or excuse me, last February, Ordinance 216 authorized finance for engineering services for municipal swimming pool options. And I do remember that we struggled with that language and did, that was our feature for amending it, rather than only an outdoor swimming pool, which was how it was originally worded. And so there is comment made in Mr. Swerengen's correspondence in advance of the July 12th public meeting. He says that, Mayor Patterson, you quoted an addatorium outdoor, we're talking any possibilities for allowing the public to engage and say where they would like to see the community center campus somewhere. So there, you know, he does take issue with the way that the legislate, I think the legislative interest of council has pursued through the months. We, I know we grappled with the original language on the levy, the ordinance that allowed the levy to go forward, but I think that there has been continued interest for that indoor/outdoor pool options. Anyway, I will very briefly just read through Mr. Swerengen's comments so that people are aware of it. It says, "The public and most of the council first got wind of this outdoor pool-only option", which was the contract that had been signed by the city for the design and engineering at the July 12th meeting, and at which point, and I think Councilmember Pappy made comment a few minutes ago, "We've been hired by the city," the MSA said, "we've been hired by the city of Athens to design your new outdoor pool." And then, two days later, the Athens News reported that the contractors emphasized the entire meeting was devoted to getting input from community members on what features they'd like to see in an outdoor pool. So it says that the mayor was not, didn't have more conversation about an addatorium possibilities, so despite having the contract in place. And it says also that in the past, the mayor has stated he serves at the pleasure of council. I will clarify that in that one piece of correspondence, the mayor is an elected official. And so, you know, I think we do, I'll just interject one comment, it's not, I'm not quoting you, Mr. Swerengen, but it is a delicate balance in that there's administration, there's legislation that's authorized by council and we don't always agree and that's what we're in the process of working through right now. But the administration stands on its own with the executive director, in a sense, is the mayor, who is elected by the citizens. And so Mr. Swerengen goes on to say, "To be perfectly clear, this is no longer simply a matter about replacing a city pool, but it has begun to deal with administrative authority or license." And so there are some issues to which Mr. Swerengen has taken issue that maybe calls it a subversion of the council process. So Mr. Swerengen has asked us to say, he closes by saying, "Process is the only civil mechanism society has to control in what he calls abuse of office," and this is a letter, so I'm not saying that that's so at this point, but I'm just conveying Mr. Swerengen's text and saying that the question before you is whether council chooses to uphold the process in its entirety or enforce it selectively. So we have received that piece of correspondence. And as I say, it is, it is a matter of a delicate balance between legislative and administrative and we are trying to work through it, we are trying to listen to comments, we are trying to hold public meetings to get us through this process in a timely fashion too, because we serve all the citizens of the county and we need to make sure that what I think what we're moving forward with in good time is some kind of swimming facility that will serve the public well, hopefully as well as the pool has in the past 40 years, our existing pool. So I'll close the statements with that and then ask if there are any other members of the public that would like to speak about the pool issue. You would have three minutes. And Mr. Swerengen, the only thing I'm going to ask, you have spoken before, so is there anybody else who has not previously spoken? Is there somebody who wants to make any new comments who's not talked to us before about the pool? Okay. Mr. Swerengen, you have three minutes and I will advise you that as President of council, I've read your correspondence and urge that we have a respectful atmosphere in here that does not demean any one council members or administration. And if so, I would have to ask you to leave if that becomes the case. So at 7:26, you've got till 7:29.
Okay, first of all, this statement that I provided to council, if you'd please enter into the record, in the statement I stated, "I take no pleasure in this, it pains me greatly and I think all of council is pained by addressing this subject." They think of the consequences and the ramifications if they approach it in a wholehearted, steadfast, accurate, factual manner, sequential, the way things happen. First of all, Mr. McGee, the mayor did not answer your question, that who made the decision to end the notatorium option? And I don't expect that to be answered at this moment, that he danced around it. As I stated further in what I gave council, the city and his team, the mayor's team, is going to do all kinds of smoking marys and kabuki dances to get around answering the question and to give you fallacious assumptions compared to what the facts are. But beyond that, you have my statement. A couple of things, a notatorium as an option was eliminated, June 30th, when the mayor signed the contract with MSA Sport, it became immediately strictly primarily an indoor situation, or an outdoor situation, and an addatorium was relegated to some future tense, 15 years down the road, whenever the levy money is available with a new levy, whatever. And then in the ordinance, council said they wanted it to be considered in present tense when they authorized the engineering, design and engineering funds. Present tense, not future tense, 10 or 15 years down the road. And the mayor took it upon himself, for whatever reasons, many that may be valid, but should have gone through the process and at least let it go a couple of weeks further or whatever and get the contractors' considered opinion as to what our options were, rather than him shutting the door on the options in advance of the first June, the July 12th meeting. Two, the option of an addatorium in future tense on MSA's representations is the size of a bathtub, maybe a physical therapy pool, not much of an addatorium, if the dimensions are technically correct with everything else on those pages. That I ask in the future that MSA provide the exact cubic footage and the exact cost to the penny instead of us or the administration or anyone else throwing out generic ballpark figures, trying to sway council to believe in their presentation. Numbers are numbers, members don't lie theoretically unless you massage the numbers, but cubic fill is cubic fill. Two feet above floodplain, one foot is what's required by and large for new construction. Need the exact numbers on fill. The city of Athens is what, willing to abandon its aquatic future for the next 15 years to Ohio University? Mr. Katsis, what do you think? And then the next 50 years? The previous consultant said that we can afford an addatorium, but the university is going to build an addatorium for their students, not just Title IX and athletics, but they're going to build an addatorium to try and mete the other 24,000 students that come in? Why does it work for the university and not us? It's, I wish I could read my own handwriting, $2 million more have been projected from the levy receipts over 20 years. Where's that money going to be used? Last week, the armory is projected, don't it cost one, one and a half million to Red Grid, Reno Bateman, three million more budgeted? Where's that money going to be used?
We'll ask the equal.
There's a lot more, but I would like Mr. McGee's question answered, I really would. I think everybody in the entire town and the region would like Mr. McGee's question answered.
Thank you. Any other comments that we have from audience members? Or I'll also return to council if there are any other comments or questions before we move on. Administration, any other comments? Okay. Thank you very much and we'll close this Committee of the Whole meeting and move on to one of our four other committees tonight, that first one being Finance and Personnel, and that's chaired by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. Just have a few appropriations that I received an email from the auditor today. And this is what the auditor is saying, that we'll need to increase in appropriations. Water administration for 740, $20,000, sewer administration. Sewer administration, 750, $25,000. Sewer plant, 750, 637, $170,000. And let's see, community, wait, this is, I had to make a correction here. It's for line 237 DUI court grant, $3,000. She goes on to say that these are all in the TC 100s, personal services. And so we'll have to come up with an ordinance for next Monday and appropriate these. I have no other appropriations from the auditor unless the administration has anything new that's, since 5 o'clock? No? Okay.
Just the correction you made.
Also, there's an item here, accepting the amounts and rates determined by the Budget Commission for general property tax. I don't have anything before me on that. Thank you.
And this is correspondence that we received from the Athens County Budget Commission. And what it does is reviews budgets and sets rates generally in the spring. And now they've come to us with that amount that Councilmember Reisner is looking up for us. It does amount to a fair amount of revenue for us during the year. And the reason we're bringing it up in committee tonight is because we'll be needing an ordinance to accept this.
Yes, here it is. I can read the letter from the auditor, the Athens County Auditor, Jill Thompson. In close, you will find the resolution accepting amounts and rates for the city of Athens for fiscal year 2017. The resolution does not include levies that will be on the November 8, 2016, general election ballot. Please have council adopt this resolution. Will this be a one-reading or a three-reading resolution?
It's three readings.
Three readings.
It has to be back to the courthouse by October 1st, so it will require suspension of the rules.
Okay.
Okay. And I believe the amount, total levy estimates are $876,956. That's, it's nice to have.
What's the date of the letter?
Date of the letter is August 30, 2016, received August the 31st. That's probably half. So we'll get a resolution together for Monday, get the process started. I think we can go suspend on the second reading.
I don't think we have time to do that. We'll be having one final meeting in September at our regular business session, so we'll need to do that. So always room for improvement, so we can work towards maybe starting that whole process if we, you know, we're, if we get a letter earlier next year.
At the point, even with the letter coming in, we wouldn't have been able to do three readings.
Right.
A minimum of six weeks.
Right. And then the Labor Day.
Yeah, you're correct.
Correct. Okay.
Okay. So Monday, we've got our work scheduled. We'll cut out for us. That's all I have for.
Thank you.
Finance.
All right. We'll move on to Planning and Development Committee, and this is chaired by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. First item of business is an application for a revocable license that's been put in by AEP for Factory Street and Riverside Drive. They would like to put fiber optic cable on the already existing poles for enhanced communication. This is a new revocable license. It will be good for 10 years, to be renewed if the city deems it. And it's been reviewed and signed off by all city personnel. Sounds pretty straightforward. Yeah.
Just a question, Councilman Fall. I know a few years ago, the, I believe it was Columbia Gas did extensive work throughout the city, and they did a lot of laying of pipes so that they could put their wire, or their gas pipes through. And I was just wondering, is there any policy in the city to do something to allow taking down these lines, these electric lines, and putting them underground? Is there anything to encourage the AEP and such to do that? Because we, I think we had a tremendous opportunity at that time. We could have really made some significant changes in the city. Those pipes were so big, they could easily have done the electric lines. But I just wondered if there's anything to encourage that, because I would certainly urge the city to go forward on doing something like that, rather than continuing to have the electric wires.
Well, I know that there was a discussion for East State Street, and when, that we can encourage, but we also end up paying for, you know, the inclusion was something that the city at that time did not want to incur. This particular thing is a small revocable license. I know that the, Mr. Stone, city engineer, when he is doing repair and such, he has been doing inclusion of fiber optic underground. So we don't have a lot of control over utilities. The ORC is, gives public utilities a lot of leeway. And so we, you know, like, we can't, we can't necessarily charge them to do things. We can require certain, you know, it's even like requiring certain things is very difficult. So if it's a project and we can, like Richland, stuff is put underground. And that was project-by-project base. That's been the policy of Mr. Stone, is to try to get everything underground.
And if I'm remembering, yeah, if I'm remembering the conversation with, for East State Street, I think it was going to be an additional $1 million plus to bury the lines underground. But it's a good point, and certainly well-taken, and maintenance is sometimes easier of the underground lines than it is for the above, plus the aesthetics of what it looks like, too, with all the wires.
My second, any other questions? Second order of business is, we talked about property out in Canenville that was going to be exchanged with another property owner. This is where our sledge goes. It was going to be something that to help do, encourage development for something where we don't need to have as much right-of-way, we don't need as much frontage. It's been deemed that this particular piece of property cannot just be exchanged, that has to go up for bid. So that will be put forward as a, as a requirement. And so council will put an ordinance to put a piece of property up for bid. That's all I have.
Okay. We'll move on to City and Safety Services Committee with Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Isley. This is very brief. It's simply an amendment to previous ordinance in which we'll be decreasing the CDBG fund from capital expenditure by $35,000 and increasing the CDBG fund professional services. So it's just an accounting line issue where we have to move the money into the other line from capital to professional services. Does that make sense?
I think you have a question from Councilmember Pappy.
And I may defer to the mayor's office, but.
So first, it's like engineering services? When you say professional services, that's kind of what I'm thinking. You're moving the money, what, what are we discussing here, mayor?
My understanding is that for this, for the Deep West Street lift station, this is essentially closing out this project and paying our bills on the project. It's, it's all but done. I think there's a few last things to do on it, so that's what we're talking about, is amending so that we can finally pay and put this project to rest, in a good way.
Yeah. It's up and working, and there's also been a recent, I'm trying to think of the proper term, announcement for art to go on the side of the building as well. So there's a call for entries for public art. So that can be, applications are being accepted on that as well.
That's a whole different topic, but.
Right. Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Butler, I think maybe I have the same question that Councilmember Pappy does. You're talking about decreasing capital, but increasing professional services. So you're talking about a transfer within the grant for the expenses. So I think the question was, do we have less in capital expenses and more in professional services?
Or it could be that they were just placed in the wrong lines initially.
Okay. Okay. Or they might, okay. And so we're adjusting now to reflect the reality of it. It's not that there's a major project change.
Correct.
Okay. That helps answer the question.
Thank you. And my apologies for not being more.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Specific in the description.
Can't know all the details of every project for the city, so, yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. We'll move on to Transportation Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, President Isley. So first on our agenda is the municipal bridge inspection, and this is a, something that is done every three years with ODOT. And we need, a municipality needs to say basically that they abide by what ODOT's rules are. And ODOT does the inspection. They send the inspectors out, but each municipality needs to agree to that inspection. And so this afternoon late, I received information discussing this. And so I've just reviewed that, and it's pretty straightforward. I remember doing it in the past. So any questions? So all of our bridges have to be inspected by ODOT. That's, that's the main point. And they have to have something from the municipality that allows them to do that and do the bridge inspections and the load ratings and any other requirements set by the Federal Highway Administration. Okay. Yes.
How many bridges are we talking?
Well, I would say several, but administration.
Nine bridges? In the city itself?
Yes. This said, no cost to us, if I take it.
For the inspections.
For the inspections, that's correct.
And I might, also, if I'm remembering correctly, is that most of our bridges within the city have received, we've been working on them. Our engineer has been very diligent about that with the latest constructed bridge, I think, is the Stimson Avenue, and that's the one that, but it's still in good enough shape at this point, at least prior to inspection, that it's not needing major repairs or renovations. But the other ones we have been working on, Richland and Union out at 56, and then the Oxbo, so.
Yeah, Dairy Lane was the most recent renovation.
And Dairy Lane, correct. And Carriage Hill, I think.
That was a load-rated bridge, and I believe that that's been changed since after it was cleared by ODOT.
And Carriage Hill, we've had some work on in the past few years, too, so.
Our city engineer just wanted us to know that this does help maintain our city, obviously, and it is somewhat of a service that we want to go into the contract for ODOT, because it would be costly for us to pay for all those inspections.
Right. Okay. Okay.
Other vehicles on our city streets. Some of you may have seen the article that was placed in the Athens News last week regarding golf carts, ATVs, things like that, running on our streets. As I come to understand it, apparently the legislature has passed a ruling that this will be allowed starting January 1st. And as a municipality, we need to opt out if we don't want that to happen. So what I understand, it's 35 miles per hour. So anything 35 miles per hour or less, would, you'd be able to have a golf cart or other vehicle. They would have to have turn signals, they would have to have a windshield wiper, lights, all of those kinds of things. But if you don't opt out, basically, we're saying that we want those kinds of things in our city. So I want to give council an opportunity to speak, and administration, and I believe we have somebody from the community who might also want to speak.
Question.
So, yes.
How do we opt out?
Remember.
What's the procedure?
It would be a city ordinance. City council drafts an ordinance to disallow the use of golf carts with all the accoutrements that, remember Pappy was just talking about? Taillights, headlights, windshield, windshield wipers, horn, turn signals, basically. And a permissible vehicle would have to pass some level of inspection, as I understand it. And it would be, as was mentioned, could be used on streets that allowed up to travel at being 35 miles an hour, which would pretty much capture every street in the city of Athens. We have a few that are 45 mile an hour. We have one, well, it's right outside, it's 50, 682, but that's outside the city. So that all said, to me, when I'm looking at East State Street, and there is travel on East State Street that's 35 miles an hour, and thinking that there could be a golf cart that's jockeying next to a semi that's bringing in product for whomever down East State Street, I just see safety disaster written all over it in the city of Athens.
Any other questions, council? Member Cochrane?
Not a question, just a comment that this is the first I'm hearing about this, aside from Mr. Polzer's previous communication. I guess I missed the article in the paper about this legislation, so I feel like we need to do a little more homework on it, and I will certainly go back and read about that legislation. I can see that it might be a safety issue, but I also wonder, you know, what's the difference between having a motorcycle on the road, which, you know, granted, I have my own qualms about motorcycles as well, but we can't legislate out having motorcycles on the state street alongside other vehicles. So I do think, you know, this is something that we need to look carefully at, considering the safety of our residents. And also, an important piece of Mr. Polzer's message to city council was about distracted driving. And I think that that's another issue that we need to look carefully at, because you brought up folks texting, and that's really important, and that's dangerous to us, whether we're behind the wheel of an open vehicle or a closed vehicle. So I would encourage council to think more about the potential of legislation, such as the legislation that Marietta has passed regarding the use of hands-free devices.
Other members?
I think it's the stupidest thing I've ever heard of.
That would be Member Reisner.
Yeah. I'll go public with that. It's a disaster.
You just did.
Member Costas.
That's my vote, right there.
Okay. Member Costas.
Excuse me. Thank you. Over the weekend, I did, actually, this is what luck. I was in, I was in a workshop that was put on by Wayne National Forest with a bunch of other trail users, and I was able to pull aside a gentleman, his name is Bill Napper, and he is president of the Ohio Motorized Trails Association. And I said, hey, I'm getting ready to talk about this on Monday. And for him, he really, he really felt that this, this was for smaller communities, ones that maybe have access to trails so that they can come off the trails and come into town. You look at a, at a setting like New Straitsville, which has been an econ, you know, an economic boom for them in that they have allowed ATVs to come off the trails and into town and, you know, purchase things. And when you go into New Straitsville now, it's, it's not as quiet as it used to be in population and also decibels. But he didn't, he didn't really, Mr. Napper didn't really feel that Athens may be the place where we would see something like this, so I thought I would just deliver that.
Member Costas, did he happen to mention whether or not he had consulted with any of the legislature? Or did he, was he a part of that lobby? Or I assume somebody pushed this legislation?
Yeah. I don't, I don't think that he was, no.
Got another comment? Okay. Member McGee.
Thank you. I can't help thinking, since I'm quite concerned with the parking situation in Athens, and I had recently mentioned to President McDavid that perhaps the university could help us out with some new parking garage or something, and it seemed that the general consensus was that people did not want more parking garages and wanted to kind of discourage people driving in Athens possibly. But my, my view of this as a possibility is that if there were parking areas outside of the main congested areas of Athens, and there were options to use these golf courts or something to shuttle people back and forth, including.
something to shuttle people back and forth, including late nights, that it might be a real benefit to the community. So I would just say rather than condemn it wholeheartedly, I know I've gone to some towns in different places where they have used golf carts to shuttle people. And I think some of the islands up in Lake Erie, they use golf carts to get around. But I know if you have a congested area, you know, and you want to be able to do that, I'm sure there'd be some sort of private enterprise that would want to pick that up and be able to provide that kind of service if it were an option. So that's just something to think about. Thank you.
Anyone else? Member Cochrane?
I have one additional comment because it occurs to me as I'm hearing about golf carts that potential legislation could impact already existing traffic that we have in our streets. For example, Ohio University employs a number of golf carts and small electric vehicles to ferry around folks for special events and things like that. So I just want to put that out there. Maybe we need to have some conversations with transportation services about what potential legislation that we might implement could have on those vehicles. Because it's primarily on campus, but, you know, are they exempt or, you know, what are the potential ramifications there?
A couple of things. I did have my monthly meeting with President McDavid and conveyed to him that there is this legislation out there and that council may act on something. So at least senior administration at OU is aware of this and what could be, what could come about. I want to circle back around to Member McGee's, you know, about places that do have golf carts. A lot of those are very vehicle restrictive in terms of having anything but golf carts. Kelly's Island is an example put in May, as well as Meconan Island, where you don't have, you have very few cars, if any, and everything else is golf cart to get around as opposed to a municipality like ours where there'd be competing road resources.
If I could just respond to that, if you go to Nashville, and I urge you to do that, and you go to the downtown honky-tonk area of Nashville, people use golf carts to shuttle the tourists back and forth. And it's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for those tourists who are tired and don't want to walk up the hills, you know, after going down to the honky-tonks. I think Athens could really have the same situation. My only concern would be whether it would be possible to limit the area that the golf carts could proceed in. And I suppose if you're issuing some sort of permit to transport people, you could certainly do that, but that would just be a question. But again, Nashville is a classic case of what I could see Athens using as a model.
So one thing, I think that we definitely need to see what the legislation is from Columbus. We need to have a copy of that. And our clerk, are you able to contact them and get a copy of that? Okay. So I think before we finalize anything for the city or if we want to move forward one way or another, we should get that and see what exactly the law reads. So we have that in front of us for further discussion. Mr. Polzer, would you like to speak at the podium?
I am Greg Polzer, citizen. And thanks for the opportunity just to say a couple of words. A lot of good ideas, but two words jumped to my mind pretty quickly. One is alcohol and the other is smartphone. Three words. And 25,000 students on the streets of Athens, and there's too much potential, I think, for some serious problems. And I know in the past there have been efforts to maybe make a pedestrian-only area, which they probably have in some other cities. And that might, that maybe would be feasible to have some of like vehicles. But you go to any of these places where you see folks on ATV, usually they're supposed to be, to have safety lessons and things like that, see a lot of young underage people riding them. High school that I taught at, two students were killed involving alcohol in ATVs on trails. Motorcyclists are licensed, they have to take a test in their ride in vehicle in spite of the fact that these maybe sometimes have to, maybe do it under the influence or a little bit less than safely. But I just, given the nature of our community, I'm just asking you to do the reasonable thing. And I think it seems like most people see how it would be, it would be very difficult to manage, monitor, and it would cause an awful lot of other problems and really jeopardize the quality of life in the community. So that's all I have to say, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Polzer.
I'd like to just kind of circle back to what Member Cochrane brought up. We have been, over the years, on council, we've received communication regarding hands-free devices. I don't know if this is a time, maybe a time since we're looking at this, but this may also be for future discussion. I don't know if we've ever had the chief of police come and speak to us about hands-off devices. And I know he's had conversations with citizens about this, but maybe that should be our next step, that we also have him come and kind of discuss this whole idea, this whole package. And, you know, maybe we look at legislation that looks at all these issues. It may be time to really kind of update where we are in Athens. I just throw that out and discuss some of this. And it would be good to have him here because a lot of this falls on his officers and enforcement. So it seems to me it behooves to have a visit from Chief Pyle. Does that sound, council? So this would have to be, if we decide to put an ordinance out there, we have a little bit of time to discuss it. So I'm thinking of maybe, maybe we could have the chief come in October to one of our committee meetings and discuss no handheld devices and this issue with the carts and such.
So are we talking about expanding on what is this vehicle use on the streets?
Kind of expanding on that because we have had prior conversation in the past and correspondence regarding driving habits, safety, all of those kind of things. Member Reisner?
Doesn't the state of Ohio already have laws that govern what you're supposed to be doing with your hands when you're driving? You're not supposed to text, you're not supposed to be using your cellphone.
I think that's just texting.
Just texting?
Yeah.
Well, that's on a cellphone, right?
Well, I think that there is not a requirement for hands-off communication. So you can be on your cellphone, speaking. But texting, I think that's the one.
Who's took it? Oh, Mayor.
I see it as a separate issue. I see it as being vehicle related, but I see it as being a separate piece of legislation if that's what council chooses to do. And, you know, Ohio does have a texting law, but I think what Member Cochrane is referring to is what, as she mentioned, what Marietta and Marietta mirrored what West Virginia is doing, which is hands-free cellular devices. So that could be, I think, I would, if that's what council chooses to do, I see that being as a separate piece of legislation as opposed to trying to roll it in with what is golf carts on the state streets. But what Mr. Polzer was saying, I think cellphone use is an interesting issue.
I was thinking of the chief's time. Yeah, I was thinking of the chief's time if he came and spoke to us about both of those issues on one night because he doesn't come that often.
And I think we could, as you're saying, Mayor, address this separately, knowing that the state new regulations on the all-terrain vehicles takes place on January 1st. So that would be the more pressing of the two pieces of legislation.
We could schedule something to have Chief Pyle come down and speak to council.
Member Costas?
I'm sorry, just for clarification, it's either you accept what ORC says for ATVs. It's not like we can craft some sort of slightly different, it's either opt out or accept what ORC...
Well, I don't think until we receive what the legislation says, I don't know if we can answer that question tonight. I think we need to look at what the legislation says and then go from there.
And I think that the law director could provide the wording.
That we need to.
Okay. That is, all right. All right, thank you. Well, we've finished the committee of the whole and the four committee meetings, and it's 8:00 PM. So we'll consider ourselves adjourned for this evening, and we'll be back next Monday night for a regular session of council. Thank you very much.